Good evening. I will now call to order the City County Council meeting for Monday, June the 7th, 2021. If I may, I just want to make a statement. I am truly pleased to welcome each of you back to the council chamber this evening. Consider your presence here a blessing. I know every member of this council is keenly aware of how difficult the preceding fifteen months has been for the Indianapolis community. And I know each of you has carried the concerns of your constituents with you during this time. It has not been easy. However, unlike so many groups around the world, from elected bodies to civic organizations to congregations to families, the global COVID-19 pandemic has not left this body with empty chairs to fill. And we are fortunate in this. So as we begin tonight, I hope that we will be cognizant of our good fortune and hold in our thoughts all those who have lost loved ones. So, we will begin our meeting with the prayer and pledge of allegiance led by Counselor Boots. Counselor Boots?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to start out with our prayer. And I am honored tonight to introduce, as we all know, Pastor Tim Lindsay, the pastor at Lifeline Baptist Church, a good, close friend of our council, and he will lead us this evening in prayer.
Thank you, Counselor. If I could just for two moments say it is so good to see you back. I love you, missed you, and so happy to see you. May God bless you as we come back. Let's pray. Father, your word tells us that if we ask anything according to your will, you hear us and you answer us and you give us those petitions that we ask. And so thank you for the privilege to approach your holy throne. Thank you, Lord, for being a God that hears and answers our prayers. Thank you for being a God of justice and yet for being a God of mercy and a God of grace. Lord, for our counselors, we pray for wisdom. We pray for health and strength and courage. And where challenges arise, we ask for discernment. Where there is confusion, clarity; where disagreement, civility. May our actions and our words today honor and please you. May all who serve our city be reminded that there is a God in heaven who loves them. May we serve you in a way that demonstrates our genuine love for you. It is in your son Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
If you all turn the flag, please. A pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Counselors, please select your green button to indicate your attendance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Forgive me, I'm not sure that my button matches my name. Could I try mine again?
Yes, could you turn—yes. Turn yours off and let's see what happens.
I actually can't clear mine button.
All right. All right. Now would you press yours? No one else, please?
I'm still Counselor Barth from the previous seating chart, sir.
I'm Counselor Carlino. I told you you had a mistake.
I do apologize. Someone at some point switched the name tags. So, we'll just have to switch seats if we can switch our seats back. I do apologize.
All right. Is that possible? Can we do that?
Go back to your old seats.
All right. There's one other. Perfect. Excellent. Counselor Carlino. Counselor Larison. Very good. Thank you very much. All right, we do not have guests this evening who are already not part of the agenda. So the next item on our agenda is official communications. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified that regular meetings of the City County Council, Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District Councils will be held in the City County Building in the council chambers on Monday, June 7th, 2021 at 7:00 PM, the purposes of such meetings being to conduct any and all business that may properly come before the regular meetings of the councils. Sincerely, Bob Osley, President, City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the law of the state of Indiana, I caused to be published in the Court and Commercial Record and in the Indianapolis Star on Friday, May 28th, 2021, a copy of a notice of public hearing on proposal numbers 174, 150, 152, and 153, 2021, said hearing to be held on Monday, June 7th, 2021, at 7:00 PM in the Public Assembly Room of the City County Building. A copy of a notice of public hearing on proposal numbers 175 through 177, 2021, said hearing to be held on Monday, June 14th, 2021, at 5:30 PM in the Public Assembly Room of the City County Building, and a copy of a legal notice of general ordinance number 16, 2021, proposal number 135, 2021. Respectfully, Sarita Hughes, Clerk of the City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved with my signature and delivered this day to the clerk of the City County Council, Sarita Hughes, the following ordinances: fiscal ordinance numbers eight and nine, general ordinance numbers 15 and 16, special ordinance number three, special resolutions numbers 23 and 24. Joseph H. Hoxette, Mayor. As President, this concludes the official communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any motions regarding the adoption of the agenda this evening?
Mr. President?
Vice President Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move to amend the agenda to advance proposals number 191 and 195, 2021, currently in the introduction of proposals to the first items of business under special orders final adoption for action this evening. These are time-sensitive items that require passage before the next city council meeting.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Counselors, is there any discussion? All right, hearing none. Madam Clerk, let us go to the board. and council resolutions. And this next item on our agenda is proposal number 192, which expresses support for the Protecting the Right to Organize (PRO) Act. Who will be speaking on that?
Sir Evans and other counselors. Counselor Barth, who is absent at the moment, but Counselors Ray, Counselor Brown, Counselor Jones, Counselor Graves.
expressing support for protecting the right to organize or proact, whereas protecting the right to organize act provides a generational opportunity for the labor movement and serves as a cornerstone of the AFL-CIO's Workers First Agenda and—
Whereas inequality has skyrocketed due to the failure of policymakers to pass pro-worker labor laws and properly administer the National Labor Relations Act of 1935, which has been dismantled for several decades to make it more difficult for workers to form unions and—
Whereas the PRO Act is the most significant worker empowerment legislation since the Great Depression, as it stands to give workers a free and fair choice on whether to form a union, ensure workers can reach the first contract quickly after the union is recognized, ends employers' practice of punishing striking workers by hiring permanent replacements, and hold corporations accountable with real penalties for illegally retaliating against workers who organize and—
Whereas the PRO Act will help make America's economy work for working people and raise stagnant wages that have only increased a mere 9% from 1973 to 2013, while productivity has increased 74% over that same time period and—
Whereas wage stagnation and runaway inequality of political, social, and economic power have undermined the public faith in our democracy and—
Whereas through the expansion of collective bargaining under the PRO Act, there will be increase in pay and protection for women, people of color, immigrants, and the LGBTQ community in areas where our nondiscrimination laws are still feeling short and—
And whereas America must build back better with unions by making the PRO Act the law of the land, increasing worker power, and rebuilding our economy fairly for all of us, now therefore be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, Indianapolis City County Council proudly recognizes and supports Protecting the Right to Organize Act. Section 2, this council expresses support for the PRO Act, which stands to greatly increase economic opportunity in America and empower workers through the promotion and expansion of collective bargaining. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature heretofore. Section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 363-414. And so I so move.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Comments from counselors?
I would just like to make a couple comments, President Osley. The PRO Act, in my opinion and opinions of many labor organizers across the country, is one of the best and most important steps forward in decades for the rights to organize for workers across the country. And it could be the most important step in making sure that workers have the rights that they deserve and they need in the workplace. And the right to organize has been a right that workers have had since the dawn of the first—the 20th century, and they need to have it in order to get the wages that they deserve, the working hours that they deserve, and, as said, the rights in the workplace, so to have a fair working environment for everybody.
Very good. Please. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to commend our Indiana AFL-CIO. I spoke with Brett Voorhees today, and he was very excited about this resolution. And I just want to commend them for protecting our U.S.-U.S. workers and for this resolution. Thank you, Counselor Evans. They've had a tough year, and I think I just appreciate all the sentiments that the AFL and all the hard work that the organizing that they've done to protect our workers during this especially tough year that they've had. So just really want to thank Brett Voorhees, Sean Chris, and Robbie Henderson for all their hard work this year. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
This is—the most welcoming. I'm an autoworker myself, retired, 40 years. Got a little bit of history as far as the labor movement, the UAW, that launched the Warren Guardia Act, 1935, the right to organize, which resulted in the sit-down in our city of Indianapolis, sit-down strikes, Anderson, Indiana, Flint, Michigan, Detroit, Michigan, St. Louis, Missouri, et cetera, et cetera. The Landmark Griffin Act was passed in 1957. Since then, various labor acts have been passed, trying to get Congress and the rest of our country to move forward, to give workers the right to bargain safely in wages, hours, and working conditions. And so we have a long history of this in our country, going back at least 75, 80 years to the mid-1930s. And since then, landmark labor legislation has been introduced and passed. And that's why we're here this evening, and I hope all of you support this proposal, this resolution. Thank you.
Excellent. All right. No additional comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by nay. All right, very good. Motion carries. Thank you very much, counselors.
All right, the next item on our agenda is proposal number 193, which recognizes the 52nd anniversary of the Stonewall riots and the June celebration of Pride Month.
A special resolution recognizing the 52nd anniversary of the Stonewall riots and the June celebration of Pride Month. Whereas LGBTQ people in Indianapolis have made and continue to make vital contributions to the city and to the state in every aspect, including in fields of education, law, health, business, science, research, economic development, architecture, fashion, sports, government, woo-hoo, music, film, politics, technology, literature, and civil rights. And whereas LGBTQ people in Indianapolis serve as law enforcement officers, firefighters, and first responders in all of Marion County's public safety divisions. And whereas LGBTQ people in the United States serve and have served in the United States Army, Coast Guard, Navy, Air Force, Marines, honorably, and with the distinction and bravery. And whereas LGBTQ people in the United States serve and have served in positions in the federal government, state, and local governments, including members of Congress, governors, mayors, and City County Council members. And whereas—
The demonstrators who protested on June 28th, 1969, 52 years ago, following a law enforcement raid of the Stonewall Inn in an LGBTQ club in New York City, are pioneers of the LGBTQ movement for equality. And whereas throughout much of the history of the United States, same-sex relationships were criminalized in many states, and many LGBTQ people in the United States were forced to hide their LGBTQ status and identities while living in secrecy and fear. Whereas on June 26th, 2015, the Supreme Court of the United States ruled in Obergefell v. Hodges, 135 S.C.T. 2502584, that same-sex couples have a constitutional right to marry, and acknowledged that no union is more profound than marriage, for it embodies the highest ideals of love, fidelity, devotion, sacrifice, and family. And whereas LGBTQ people in Indiana face disparities in employment, healthcare, education, housing, and many other areas central to the pursuit of happiness in the United States and—
Whereas 30 states have no explicit ban on discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity in the workplace, housing, or public accommodations. And 35 states have no explicit ban on discrimination against LGBTQ individuals in education. And whereas LGBTQ youth are at increased risk of suicide, homelessness, and becoming victims of bullying and violence. And whereas the LGBTQ community has faced discrimination, inequality, and violence throughout the history of the United States. And whereas LGBTQ people in Indianapolis and across Indiana have fought for equal treatment, dignity, and respect and—
And whereas LGBTQ people in Indianapolis have achieved significant milestones, ensuring that future generations of LGBTQ people in the city will enjoy a more equal and just society. And whereas despite being marginalized throughout the history of the United States, LGBTQ people in Indianapolis and across the country continue to celebrate their identities, love, and contributions to the United States in various expressions of pride. And whereas the inclusion of LGBTQ people in Indianapolis continues to expand every day, and LGBTQ people in Indianapolis remain determined to pursue equality, respect, and inclusion for all individuals regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity. Now therefore be resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana—
Section 1, the City County Council supports the rights, freedoms, and equal treatment of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and the queer referred to in this resolving clause—sorry, my glasses are fogged up—clauses that the LGBTQ people in Indianapolis and around the world. Section 2, the City County Council supports efforts to ensure the equal treatment of all people in Indianapolis regardless of sexual orientation and gender identity. Section 3, the City County Council encourages the celebration of June as LGBTQ Pride Month in order to provide a lasting opportunity for all people in Indianapolis to a) learn about the discrimination and inequality that the LGBTQ community endured and continues to endure, and b) to celebrate the contributions of the LGBTQ community throughout the history of the city. Section 4, the mayor is invited to join this resolution by affixing his signature, which he has done. And section 5, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 363414. And I so move.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? Vice President Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to step in front of the alley just really quickly and just mention, too, that we are here and able to celebrate Pride Month because of those pioneers who have gone before us, most notably in the riots and the Stonewall uprising, by contributions of the Black and Latina, trans community members, most notably Martha P. Johnson, Martha Payton O'Meain Johnson, and Sylvia Rivera. And so I would like to make sure that they are especially noted in this, and as well as the people who have all come before us. So—
We're good.
Well, all right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by nay. All right, the motion carries. Thank you, counselors.
Thanks.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 144, refer to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 144 appoints Belinda Drake to the Board of Business and Neighborhood Services. Ms. Drake was present and stated that she is a member of the Far East Side community, adding that she is heavily involved in her community and looks forward to serving on this board. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 10 to 0, and, Mr. President, I so move.
All right. Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed now to the board for our vote. Very good. Motion passes at 24 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 171, refer to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 171 appoints Brandon Fishburne to the Woodriff Place Economic Improvement Board. Mr. Fishburne was present and stated that he has been involved in serving in a variety of capacities, primarily on the west side of Indianapolis. He stated that he moved to Woodriff Place in October 2019, adding that he is very happy to serve in this capacity. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 10 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed now to the board for our vote. Motion carries 24 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 172, refer to Administration and Finance Committee. Chairman Mascheri?
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 172,021 reappoints Barbara Howard to the Alcohol and Beverage Board Marion County Committee in a do-pass rate—vote of 10 to 0. I so move.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Very good. The motion passes 24 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 151, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 151, 2021 approves the mayor's appointment of Lauren N. Rodriguez as the Director of the Office of Public Health and Safety. Ms. Rodriguez stated that she has lived in Indianapolis her entire life. Ms. Rodriguez said that she has worked as a litigation associate, a deputy attorney general, a civil litigation section with the Indiana Attorney General, and an attorney with the Marion County Public Defender Agency. Ms. Rodriguez stated that her goal is to use the resources they have to have been given and identify areas where they can grow and do better in the office. She also said that she is happy to be in this position, able to work alongside those in the Office of Public Health and Safety, City County Councils, and community stakeholders. Counselor Mascheri moves, seconded by Counselor Carlino, to send proposal 151 to the full council. The do-pass recommendation, motion carried by a vote of 8 to 4, with Counselors Arne, Bain, Dilk, and Mallory cast negative votes. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 19 to 5. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 174, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson? Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 175, 2021, Ms. Martha Smith, who do not intend to send a draft report. Smith said that he has joined the military in 1982 after graduating from Princeton. He served in the military service in Iraq and Afghanistan. He sent his death in the United States Attorney's Court, jury of defense, served up in the U.S. Military Service Office. Council now re-moves, seconded by Council Renick, to Prop 174 to the full council. The do-pass recommendation, motion carried by a vote of 12 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 24 to 0. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 172, refer to Administration and Finance Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 175, 2021, Ms. Martha Smith, who do not intend to send a draft report. Smith said that he has joined the military in 1982 after graduating from Princeton. He served in the military service in Iraq and Afghanistan. He sent his death in the United States Attorney's Court, jury of defense, served up in the U.S. Military Service Office. Council now re-moves, seconded by Council Renick, to Prop 174 to the full council. The do-pass recommendation, motion carried by a vote of 12 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Counselor Bain? Thank you. Motion carries 24 to 0. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 172, refer to Administration and Finance Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal Number 175, 2021, Ms. Martha Smith, who do not intend to send a draft report. Smith said that he has joined the military in 1982 after graduating from Princeton. He served in the military service in Iraq and Afghanistan. He sent his death in the United States Attorney's Court, jury of defense, served up in the U.S. Military Service Office. Council now re-moves, seconded by Council Renick, to Prop 174 to the full council. The do-pass recommendation, motion carried by a vote of 12 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Counselor Bain?
Thank you. Motion carries 24 to 0.
The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 174, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal Numbers 175 through 178 refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Proposal Number 175 introduced by Counselor Adamson approves an amendment to the declaratory resolution and development plan for the consolidated Harding Street redevelopment area with respect to the elevator hill expansion area. Proposal Number 176 introduced by Counselor Jones approves an amendment to the declaratory resolution and development plan for the consolidated Harding Street redevelopment area with respect to the GM expansion area, Area 2 allocation area. Proposal Number 177 introduced by Counselor Jones authorizes the issuance of economic development tax increment revenue bonds and a maximum aggregate principal amount not to exceed $135,45,000 for Ellen Co. U.S. Inc. for the Ellen Co. project on the former GM's stamping plant site in District 16. Proposal Number 178 introduced by Councilors Osley and Lewis amends Chapters 1, Chapter 740, 742, and 744 of the Consolidated Zoning and Subdivision Control Ordinance for Indianapolis, Marion County for technical amendments and the addition of a secondary district. Proposal Number 179 introduced by Counselor Osley, refer to the Administration and Finance Committee, approves an additional appropriation totaling $33,522,259 in the 2021 City Non-Departmental Budget Coronavirus Relief Federal Grant Fund to help address the demand for residential rental assistance from Marion County residents who have been impacted by the pandemic. Proposal Number 180 introduced by Counselor Lewis, refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, appoints Percy Bland Jr. to the Metropolitan Board of Doning Appeals, Division 1. Proposal Number 181 introduced by Counselor Osley, refer to the Municipal Corporations Committee, appoints Monica Lager Payne to the Marion County Health and Hospital Corporation Board of Trustees. Proposal Numbers 182 through 184 refer to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, and were introduced by Counsel Robinson. Proposal Number 182 approves an additional appropriation totaling $3,311,371 in the 2021 Budget of the Information Services Agency, Metropolitan Indianapolis Police Department, and Office of Public Health and Safety, ISA, IMPD, General, and Consolidated County General Funds to support a collective community approach to public safety. Proposal Number 183 approves an additional appropriation totaling $1,117,500 in the 2021 Budget of the Marion County Sheriff's Office Federal Grants Fund for the purposes of additional grant awards for combating the spread of coronavirus, law enforcement mental health resources, and to support the needs of inmates. Proposal Number 184 approves an additional appropriation totaling $1,086,600 in the 2021 Budget of the Marion County Superior Courts Federal, State, and Local Grants Funds for the purposes of additional grant awards to cover additional expenses associated with the coronavirus pandemic, providing additional services to juvenile offenders, and funding positions associated with pretrial probation. Proposal Numbers 185 to 189 refer to the Public Works Committee. Proposal Number 185 introduced by Councilors Adamson, Barth, and McCormick amend the code to add a new Chapter 7, 710, "Energy Benchmarking and Transparency" to Title III, Public Health and Welfare, as an energy and water benchmarking, reporting the transparency requirement to foster energy conservation, reduce operating costs, economic investment, and efficient building stock with corresponding increased valuation of assets and affordability, and a cleaner and healthier environment. Proposal Number 186 introduced by Counselor Boots authorizes a speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour in the Tanglewood Estates and Mayflower Meadows subdivisions in District 3. Proposal Number 187 introduced by Counselor Jones authorizes parking restrictions on the south side of Prospect Street near Moore Street in District 16. Proposal Number 188 introduced by Counselor Dilk authorizes speed limit reductions to 25 miles per hour in the Whittaker Valley subdivision in District 24. Proposal Number 189 introduced by Counselor Adamson authorizes the installation of parking meters on the south side of 10th Street between College Avenue and Belle Fountain Street on the east side of Pennsylvania Street from 11th to 10th Street in District 17. Proposal Number 190 introduced by Councilors Barth, Brown, Potts, Boots, Carlino, Adamson, McCormick, and Larison, refer to the Rules and Public Policy Committee, amends Chapter 151, Article 3 of the code to add the Environmental Sustainability Committee as a standing committee. Proposal Number 191 introduced by Counselor Osley, refer to the Committee of the Ho, exercises the city's authority to opt out of state-conducted settlement of pending opioid litigation. Proposal Number 194 introduced by Counselor Osley, refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, authorizes the issuance of Indiana multifamily note bonds in an aggregate amount, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $15,100,000 to finance a portion of the cost of acquisition, construction, and equipping of a multifamily housing facility consisting of 156 apartment units, together with functionally-related and subordinate facilities for low- and moderate-income individuals and families. Central Greens Apartments to be located at 3355 Kirk Brightway in District 15. Proposal Number 195 introduced by Counselor Osley, refer to the Committee of the Ho, ratifies public health orders related to the COVID-19 pandemic. Proposal Numbers 1, I'm sorry, Proposal Numbers 212 through 214 refer to the Public Works Committee. Proposal Number 212 introduced by Counselor Adamson appoints Dan Hayek to the Board of Public Works. Proposal Number 213 introduced by Counselor Osley appoints Sebako Jawanza to the Board of Public Works. And Proposal 214 introduced by Counselor Osley reappoints Henry Fernandez to the Board of Public Works. Proposal Number 215 introduced by Counselor Osley, refer to the Administration and Finance Committee, appoints Abel Contreras to the Indianapolis Marion County Building Authority Board of Trustees. Mr. President, this concludes the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders Priority Business. Proposal Numbers 196 through 211, 2021 are all rezoning ordinances certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission. If no one wishes to call any of these rezonings down for a public hearing, they will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down any of the rezonings? All right, seeing no one, Proposal Numbers 196 through 211, 2021 will pass into law. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders Public Hearing. That first item is Proposal Number 147, refer to Administration and Finance Committee. Chairman Mascari.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 147 was heard on May 11 virtually. The digest approves an additional appropriation of $3,621,300 to the 2021 City Non-Departmental Budget American Rescue Plan to fund efforts of COVID pandemic, including programs to combat the secondary economic effects of a pandemic faced by residents and businesses and nonprofits. This passed out of the committee, 10-0, do pass. I so move.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from councilors? All right, seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on Proposal Number 147? All right, seeing no one, we will then proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries 24 to 0. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 150, refer to Administration and Finance Committee. Chairman Mascari.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 150, 2021, was heard on May 11, 2011, approves an additional appropriation of $2,128,000 to the 2021 Budget of the Department of Parks and Recreation Parks General Fund to finance a final maturity payment of the existing 2014 note related to the capital improvements of the Eagle Creek Golf Course. It passed and do pass record, a do-pass vote of 10-0. I so move.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from councilors? All right, seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on Proposal 150?
This is an emergency request to City Council. Mayor Joe Hogg said that you put a, to stop the violence in the city of Indianapolis, that the City Council and Joe Hogg have put a curfew and travel advisory in place until our crime goes down.
Sir, 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 sir. We are addressing Proposal Number 150 on a fiscal. This has nothing to do with what you're talking about.
Well.
If you want to, if you want to make a comment, it needs to be germane to this proposal. Is there anyone else from the audience who would like to comment on Proposal 150?
Larry Vaughn, please. Mr. President, I'm just here tonight to promote my YouTube channel, Larry Vaughn the Glass Man on YouTube. You can go there and enjoy the content that I have accumulated there.
Mr. Vaughn.
And you people at home can.
Are you going to talk to Proposal 150?
I would talk to it because, but I don't want to go astray, Mr. President, because I know that in my community in Bethel Park directly, that our children are being, having the police call on them when they come down to enjoy the activities that is provided by that situation, and that they are not being able to come in there and enjoy those amenities, and that they are bringing people in and renting those facilities out from people from Carmel and Fisher or wherever else they come from, and calling the police on the underserved people that are in my community right now. Again, Larry Vaughn the Glass Man on YouTube, I'm there for you and give you a better explanation.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to comment on Proposal 150? All right, seeing no one, Madam Clerk, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries 24 to 0. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 152, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 152, 2021, approves an additional appropriation of $50,000 in the 2021 Budget of the Marion County Coroner's Office for the purpose of additional grant awards for violent death, reporting, and sudden unexpected infant death investigations. Deputy Chief McGinty stated that after completing the coroner's budget last year, they were awarded a grant funds in their need, had those funds put in their budget to support infant death investigations, as well as obtaining their accreditation for their office. Counsel Mascari moves, seconded by Counsel Oliver, to send Proposal 152 to the full council. They do pass recommendation, the motion carried by a vote of 12 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Excuse me. Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from councilors? Counselor Maury.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hopefully someone here from the coroner's office, I'm not sure, I didn't see the crowd yet. You know, I get that we need this money in there, but, you know, what's the, what's the morale been like at the coroner's office?
Is there anyone here from the coroner's office who can speak to this?
Unfortunately, I don't think we have anyone here from the coroner's office.
Thank you. Disappointing, but okay, thank you. No further questions.
All right, very good. Thank you. Any additional comments from councilors? All right, seeing none. Is there any? Yes. Counselor Hart.
Yeah, I just want to make a statement about the coroner's office. It was a few months back, Counselor Mascari and I went and did a tour, and, I mean, it was mainly in focus on getting a new facility, but even in their current state, any dollar amount would be beneficial to moving forward, what they, what they have to handle. They are short on everything over there, so just to help out any enlightening information for Leader Maury, in terms of the morality from our perspective, when we were over there was, you know, anything helps, and so, you know, this I think would be something that would be helpful for, for the coroner's office.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Any additional comments from councilors? All right, seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on Proposal Number 152?
I sure do, Mr. President. You know, there have been an influx of homeless people from all over the Midwest coming to Indianapolis because of the amenities that they receive when they get here, but I think it's awful disingenuous to say that we're trying to give this money to the coroner's office when, when a person is murdered here in the city of Indianapolis. My friend, Dr. Echoes, who was the coroner, said that each of those bodies net the medical profession over $750,000. So why can't they pay some of this bill? Because they're stripping the guts out of these people as soon as they come to their operating rooms and selling their parts. So I'm just concerned about that, and Leroy, I'm concerned also.
This is completely out of order, talking about these people like they're not human beings. This is completely out of order.
They're doing it. You're doing, you're the one that's doing it, Mr. President.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Mr. Vaughn, Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, very good. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to comment on Proposal Number 152? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Chairman Gray. Very good. The motion carries 24 to 0.
The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 153, refer to Public Works Committee. Chairman Robinson.
I'll do this again. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 153, refer to Public Works Committee. down for a public hearing, they will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down any of the rezonings? All right, seeing no one, proposal numbers 196 through 211, 2021 will pass into law. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders Public Hearing. That first item is proposal number 147, referred to Administration and Finance Committee. Chairman Mascari.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 147 was heard on May 11th virtually. The Digest approves an additional appropriation of $3,621,300 to the 2021 City Non-Department Budget American Rescue Plan to fund efforts of COVID pandemic, including programs to combat the secondary economic effects of a pandemic faced by residents and businesses and nonprofits. This passed out of the committee 10-0. Do pass. I so move.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? All right, seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on proposal number 147? All right, seeing no one, we will then proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries 24 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 150, referred to Administration and Finance Committee. Chairman Mascari.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 150, 2021, was heard on May 11th, 2011, approves an additional appropriation of $2,128,000 to the 2021 budget of the Department of Parks and Recreation's Parks General Fund to finance a final maturity payment of the existing 2014 note related to the capital improvements of the Eagle Creek Golf Course. It passed in do-pass record, a do-pass vote of 10-0. I so move.
The motion is improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? All right, seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on proposal 150?
This is an emergency request to City Council. Mayor Joe Hogg said that you put a, to stop the violence in the city of Indianapolis, that the City Council and Joe Hogg have put a curfew and travel advisory in place until our crime goes down.
Sir, 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 sir. We are addressing proposal number 150 on a fiscal. This has nothing to do with what you're talking about. If you want to, if you want to make a comment, it needs to be germane to this proposal. Is there anyone else from the audience who would like to comment on proposal 150?
Larry Vaughn, please. Mr. President, I'm just here tonight to promote my YouTube channel, Larry Vaughn the Glass Man on YouTube. You can go there and enjoy the content that I have accumulated there.
Mr. Vaughn.
And you people at home can.
Are you going to talk to proposal 150?
I would talk to it because, but I don't want to go astray, Mr. President, because I know that in my community in Bethel Park directly, that our children are being, having the police call on them when they come down to enjoy the activities that is provided by that situation and that they are not being able to come in there and enjoy those amenities and that they are bringing people in and renting those facilities out from people from Carmel and Fisher or wherever else they come from and calling the police on the underserved people that are in my community right now. Again, Larry Vaughn the Glass Man on YouTube, I'm there for you and give you a better explanation.
Quiet order, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to comment on proposal 150? All right, seeing no one. Madam Clerk, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries 24 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 152, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 152, 2021, approves an additional appropriation of $50,000 in the 2021 budget of Marion County Coroner's Office for the purpose of addition of grant awards for violent death reporting and sudden unexpected infant death investigations. Deputy Chief McGinty stated that after completing the coroner's budget last year, they were awarded a grant funds and they need, have those funds put in their budget to support infant death investigations as well as obtaining their accreditation for their office. Counselor Mascari moved, seconded by Counselor Oliver, to send proposal 152 to the full council. They do pass recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of 12 to 0. Mr. President, I so move. Excuse me.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? Counselor Maury.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hopefully someone here from the coroner's office. I'm not sure. I didn't see the crowd yet. You know, I get that we need this money in there, but you know, what's the, what's the morale been like at the coroner's office?
Is there anyone here from the coroner's office who can speak to this? Unfortunately, I don't think we have anyone here from the coroner's office.
Thank you. Disappointing, but okay. Thank you. No further questions.
Very good. Thank you. Any additional comments from councilors? All right, seeing none. Is there any? Yes. Counselor Hart.
Yeah, I just want to make a statement about the coroner's office. That was a few months back. Counselor Mascari and I went and did a tour and I mean, it was mainly in focus on getting a new facility, but even in their current state, any dollar amount would be beneficial to moving forward, what they, what they have to handle. They are short on everything over there. So just to help out any enlightening information for Leader Maury, in terms of the morality from our perspective, when we were over there was, you know, anything helps. And so, you know, this I think would be something that would be helpful for, for the coroner's office.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Any additional comments from councilors? All right, seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on proposal number 152?
I sure do, Mr. President. You know, there have been an influx of homeless people from all over the Midwest coming to Indianapolis because of the amenities that they receive when they get here. But I think it's awful disingenuous to say that we're trying to give this money to the coroner's office when, when a person is murdered here in the city of Indianapolis. My friend, Dr. Echoes, who was the coroner, said that each of those bodies net the medical profession over $750,000. So why can't they pay some of this bill? Because they're stripping the guts out of these people as soon as they come to their operating rooms and selling their parts. So I'm just concerned about that. And Leroy, I'm concerned also.
This is completely out of order, talking about these people like they're not human beings. This is completely out of order.
They're doing it. You're doing, you're the one that's doing it, Mr. President.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Mr. Vaughn, Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, very good. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to comment on proposal number 152? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, we will proceed to the board for our vote. Chairman Gray. Very good. The motion carries 24 to 0. I'll do this again. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 153, referred to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 153, 2021, approves a transfer in additional appropriations totaling $48,898, I'm sorry, $48,898,000 in the 2020 budget of the Department of Public Works, Transportation General Stormwater General City Cumulative Parking Meter and Solid Waste Collection General Funds to finance, design, construction, and inspect of the capital infrastructure projects along with any unanticipated contractual costs. Counselor Boots moved, seconded by Counselor Carlino, to send proposal number 153, 2021 to the full council with a do-pass recommendation and that motion carried by a vote of 12 to 0 and I so move.
Second.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? All right, seeing none. Is there anyone in, in the audience who would like to comment on proposal number 153?
This is another one, Mr. President, that I'm going to stay on point if I can indulge you just for a minute. I don't see how this is going to do any good for the city of Indianapolis because why? Because they've shut I-645 down and all that traffic is now coming inner city to travel our streets and the heavy trucks are definitely taking a toll on our infrastructure and the city has got no consideration for this extra traffics that's going to be wearing our streets down and so forth. Again, ladies and gentlemen, Larry Vaughn the Glass Man on YouTube, come visit my situation there and get more of an explanation. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to comment on proposal 153? All right, seeing none. Yes, Vice President Adamson, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to clarify something. Not that it was germane at all, but since he brought it up, the vehicular travel of both passenger and commercial semi-trucks is substantial on our streets. And if there was anything that the city could do, believe me, we would be doing it. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of ways that we can tell when traffic is coming in off the interstate whether those are local deliveries or local travelers or if they're just bypassing the construction. So believe me, the city, the Department of Public Works, neighborhoods, this body has been trying to find ways to figure out how to keep that traffic going around the city as it's supposed to, but as we know, 465 is also a parking lot. So I just wanted to set the record straight on that.
Thank you, Vice President. Yes, Chairman Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor Adamson, a few years back, there was a detour, I think I sent me 65, I think Mayor Arti, I think in the Little Flower area there, a lot of runoff traffic came through there and they managed, she managed to get the state or someone to supplement the restructuring of some of the roadway down there. And I want to know what our standing is looking into that for the state and federal government we receive, we receiving undue amount of traffic on our streets. Can we be reimbursed? Have we looked into that?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know that we are in constant conversations with NDOT at this time on, right now, what we're trying to do is curb the, the traffic in general because it's not only in destroying our infrastructure, but it's also dangerous. We're watching vehicles of huge numbers filling in streets that were never designed to hold this kind of, this kind of traffic, especially this, the large semi-trucks that are now traveling off of the interstate onto Ohio Street and down East Street to get down to Washington Street to bypass that section that's been shut down.
Yeah, she was able to get Community East and some others involved real deeply in getting the state to do something about the roadway in the Little Flower area over there. I just wanted to mention that.
And I know Director Parker, who is here, I believe, has been in constant conversations with NDOT since this whole start, whole thing started, so.
All right, any additional comments from councilors? Counselor Carlino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to remind everyone that $25 million of this fiscal goes to rebuilding and reconstructing our residential neighborhood streets. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Counselor Carlino. Additional comments from councilors? Counselor Ethan Evans.
Thank you, President Osley. I was not present in the Public Works Committee meeting, but as Counselor Carlino had said, the $25 million that does go to the resurfacing, rebuilding the residential streets, very popular, obviously with citizens. So after that, was anything discussed in furtherance of another funding source after that first $25 million after this funding? So I know, I, I don't know where this specific one is coming from per se in, in that part of the budget from the meeting. So like, if there was another, you know, in addition to that, was that discussed in the meeting on top of that first $25 million?
We didn't discuss additional appropriations or where they might be coming from because we were just trying to get this one out the door to get the work done in the streets. But I know the department is constantly looking for ways to restructure debt and find additional resources for local streets. We did at least establish a formula for understanding exactly how bad residential streets are, and that was a great part of the conversation in that committee meeting. So I think understanding that the current situation is half the battle. Now that we know the condition of a lot of our residential streets, primarily in the inner city core, we can really address those a little more accurately.
Very good. Additional comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, we will proceed to the board for our vote.
I am Ann Mullin O'Connor. I'm the Corporation Counsel for the city and the county. And we ask the council to adopt this resolution to allow us to opt out of the current settlement arrangement for the purposes of having additional time to work with the state and learn more about the potential settlement options, get more information, and then be able to make a decision with respect to the litigation that we've had pending since November of 2017 for opioid, against opioid manufacturers, distributors, and retailers.
Counselor Maury.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we'd understand that at a future point, if we are to opt out of this agreement tonight, we can opt back into this agreement and we don't have, we don't face any sort of penalties, anything like that for opting out?
Correct. This legislation allows us an opportunity to opt out, but then also within 60 days, opt back in. But at this point, we don't really have the type of information that we need in order to make that decision.
So this just really gives us an opportunity to weigh our best options?
Yes, and to work with the state on that.
Thank you.
Counselors, is there a motion?
Second.
All right, is a movement second on proposal number 191, which exercises the city's authority to opt out of state-conducted settlement, out pending opioid litigation. So motions are improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? All right, seeing none. We proceed to the board for our vote. Counselors, can you? All right. The motion carries 24 to 0.
Thank you.
Earlier under the adoption of the agenda, a motion carried to advance proposal number 195, 2021, for action this evening under final adoption. Proposal 195 ratifies public health orders related to COVID-19. Who will be presenting this proposal this evening? Welcome, Dr. Kane.
Thank you, President Osley. Good evening and thank you to President Osley and all of our city-county councilors for inviting me to present the new public health order for Marion County. Tonight, I'm very hopeful. Our COVID-19 cases and positivity rate are trending down. Every day, members of our community are making the choice to protect themselves and those they love by getting the COVID-19 vaccine. And last month, the CDC released new guidance for fully vaccinated individuals that makes it clear the COVID-19 vaccine is highly effective in our communities' route back to normal. That is why tonight I am recommending that we lift Marion County's mask mandate for fully vaccinated individuals with a few exceptions. That includes hospitals and public transportation. Those of our residents who have chosen to receive the COVID-19 vaccine can now safely remove their masks in most public settings. This is truly a milestone for the Indianapolis community. In addition, I am recommending a loosening of capacity restrictions. Religious services and funerals will move to 100% capacity. Indoor sporting events will move to 50% capacity. Limits on large gatherings will increase from 50 to 500 people. Indoor service at bars will move to 75% capacity. Personal service businesses will no longer have to be by appointment only, but capacity must allow for six feet of social distancing between clients. The entertainment, cultural, and tourism sites such as our zoo and museums can now host up to 75% capacity. Our gyms, our fitness centers, dance studios, et cetera, can move to 75% capacity. Our libraries will now be at 75% capacity. Community pools can operate at full capacity. And for all you tango dancers out there, and dancing can come back to music venues as long as six-foot social distancing is maintained and clearly marked. Now, this is welcome news, I think, for our community, but it does not mean that this is the end of the pandemic yet. In the marathon to end this COVID-19 pandemic, we can see the finish line, and now is the time to dig deep and sprint to that finish. So let me just say vaccination works best when we do it together, that the more of our community who are vaccinated, the safer we all are. The Health Department will recommend the full reopening of our community. Let me say this again. The Health Department will recommend the full reopening of our community when we reach a rate of 50% fully vaccinated residents and are seeing less than 100 cases per day. And I continue to hope that we can achieve this by the 4th of July. So we're continuing to focus on breaking down those barriers to the vaccine and educating our residents on its benefits. We have a hotline for those with questions about the vaccine and registration. Please call us at 317-221-2100. We are continuing our vaccine pop-up clinics with community partners. We have investing $1 million total in 86 community-based organizations serving minority residents to promote the vaccine and support our city's continued recovery. We will be offering vaccine incentives such as race memorabilia and gift cards. We are doing neighborhood canvases, digital town halls, and other such efforts to provide education and address the concerns about the vaccine. If we continue to do those things to protect ourselves and those we love from COVID-19, getting the vaccine, washing our hands, and continuing to social distance and wear masks when necessary, the full reopening of our community is definitely within our reach. I will now address any questions you may have.
Before we do that, I'd like to ask if there's a motion on proposal number 195? All right, proposal's been properly moved and seconded. Counselor Maury.
I'd like to hear the discussion first, but I also have an amendment, Mr. President, towards the end of discussion. If you want to do a discussion first, where I can?
Let's go through the discussion.
Okay, I have a question as well.
Okay.
Thank you. When we look at things such as the vaccination rate, are we looking at, let me just start this question, actually. When someone tests positive for COVID-19, how long do antibodies show up in their system? Do we know?
So we know that we feel that you're protected for at least 90 days after you have a diagnosis of COVID-19, but there's some more recent evidence that is suggesting that that immunity may last as long as eight to nine months.
So are those people that have already contact, had contact with COVID-19 and they've been diagnosed, are they being at all considered in this number of vaccination because they're, I mean?
So actually, they are not considered in the 50% vaccination rate that we need, but they are considered in that overall 80% of people who are protected for us to reach herd immunity. So 50% vaccination we're requiring, and another 30% of the folks who have a recent diagnosis of COVID-19, and they have a natural immunity related to that. And we estimate that to be about 30%.
On top of the number we're already at with vaccinations?
Yes. So we're thinking that that's about 30%. We have used our partners at IU Federal School of Public Health to help make that analysis of our COVID-19 data, and they've confirmed that roughly 30% of our community has been exposed to the virus in recent months, and we feel that they are protected.
So with that understanding, wouldn't we be over 60%?
So actually, if we reach the 50% vaccination and we have 30% of individuals in the community developing their natural immunity, we're looking at a total of 80% that we feel reaches our herd immunity for this community.
So are you saying that we need to get to 80%, not 50%?
We need to get 50% for the vaccination rate. We are currently right now at 30% overall for our community for being fully vaccinated, and we are 41% of this community that has received at least one vaccine.
So people that are naturally vaccinated through having it are no longer counted?
So for the vaccination rate, I'm actually, that 50% is just related to the vaccine given vaccinators for vaccination. I'm adding another 30% from the actual diagnosis of COVID-19 diagnosis that gives us natural immunity to get us to a total of 80%. 50% from vaccine-induced antibodies that protects us, and then another 30% from folks who have had an actual infection related to COVID-19, and they have developed natural antibodies as a result of the disease that protects them. So that's a national, that's a natural immunity.
I'll yield my time for now, Mr. President.
Very good. Counselor Na, and then Counselor Hart, I think.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Kane, good evening.
How are you, sir?
Thank you for being, being with us. We talked about the 50% vaccination goal. Could you please speak to just briefly the metrics that are used to, to find and come up with that 50%?
Yes. So for getting to what some of the Yes, so for getting to what some of the scientists say, that a community needs to reach herd immunity, herd immunity means that a certain percentage of the population has to have protection from transmitting the infection to somebody else. And so we have looked at that figure of 80% as our goal for reaching herd immunity for Marion County. And so we came up with, how do we get to 80%? So we looked at, what's the percentage of people who are being infected with COVID-19 as a diagnosis? And as a result of that infection, they develop what we call natural immunity. They develop an immune system with the antibodies that they have developed to prevent them from getting reinfected again, but also it usually prevents them from spreading that infection to somebody else. That percentage for our community was around 30%. So as a result of that 30% of our community that were already starting out being protective, we felt we needed 50% of our community to be vaccinated with a vaccine to develop more people with an immunity or immune system to prevent from spreading COVID-19, as well as protecting themselves from getting infected.
I appreciate that. I'm more interested, as it relates to the 50%, of how do you know that you've gotten to 50%? What metrics do you use to know that you have had 50% of Marion County residents vaccinated?
So thank you for asking that question, so I better understand what you're trying to get at. So we use the Indiana Department of Health's immunization registry system to help determine what our vaccination rate is for Marion County. And we get reports related to that submitted to us from the Indiana Department of Health for Marion County. And the reason for that is, we have all different venues and different vendors and different people providing that vaccination, and it is required to report that to the Indiana Department of Health Immunization Registry, yes.
Thank you, and I just want to be clear, and I'll finish up here in just a moment, that Marion County Board of Public Health is saying that 36% today of Marion County residents are vaccinated, and we're looking to get to 50%. In the 36% that we have today are folks who have traveled to Florida for the winter, the many thousands of Marion County residents who travel to Florida and other parts of our nation to spend time and have received their vaccines out of state, the many thousands, if not, well, many hundreds, if not thousands, of college students who are not attending university in Marion County, but in other parts of our nation. Are they being counted in that 36%? And if they're not, I'm going to guess that we're not at 36%, that we're actually higher, and that the 36% vaccination rate is, in fact, somewhat inaccurate and unreliable as it relates to the 50% that we need to open back up at 100%.
So what I will answer, respond to that is, yes, we have a number of colleges here that have students that may not reside in Marion County, and they may not always get their vaccinations here. But some of the schools, systems, for example, IUPUI, which is our largest college campus here with 30,000 students, and I think you can add faculty of 10,000 more, they require their students to report to them whether they're... I'm just saying whether they're vaccinated or not, and that information is reported to the State Department of Health. I cannot tell you that we don't have other students that may be outside, who may not necessarily, as a resident of Marion County, may get vaccinated in their hometowns or whatever, but, and they're supposed to report that to the State Department of Health, but if they're outside the state, no, there could be a number of cases, I grant you, that could be, receive a vaccination, and they may not make it to our immunizations registry.
Counselor Nae.
And I just, just one last one, Mr. President. So just to be clear, that there are potentially thousands of Marion County residents who received vaccines outside of our state, whether that be in Florida, whether that be at other universities across our nation that have not been included in the 36% that the Marion County Board of Public Health is using?
I don't know that I would say it's in the thousands. I will also say...
It's possible.
It's a possibility, yes. But I would say that the federal government with CDC tries to encourage anybody that's vaccinated, that's from a state, but they may go to New Jersey, they encourage those state registries to report the information to the other states. Let's just say someone... Someone... Well, yeah, I guess that's the best way I can say that, yes.
It's an honor system, no guarantee that that information would be reported from state to state.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I yield back.
Counselor Hart.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Kane, thank you for your time this evening as well, and, you know, members of my constituency and myself, you know, kind of see these mandates as a bit inconsistent. For example, you know, I'm glad that it's safe enough for religious services to be opened up to 100%, but outdoor sporting events are still at 50%. You know, how can we permit somebody sitting at a table without a mask on and having conversation but not walk from a door to a table? Can you explain that scientific approach to me?
So I think you were questioning, if I understand the question, you were saying, how can we have outdoor events just at 50%? Was that the question I got from you, sir?
The main point is, you know, the inconsistencies within the mandates, that we can go to a religious service and have 100% occupancy, but we have to have 50% at an outdoor service.
Yes, so I can, I'll try to explain that to you. So when we have some outdoor events, and depending on the size and the population density of that, we restrict it to 50% as compared to, I don't know of any church that has that magnitude of a size, so I'll give you an example, the Indy 500, like 135,000 spectators, where it's a heavily dense population, and so we are in the process of trying to do an analysis related to that to see if any impact from a spirit related to that versus the settings of our current churches that we have here, which we don't have huge sizes related to that, that we feel a lot more comfortable, have a lot more experience of faith-based institutions of smaller sizes compared to a outdoor sporting event that could have thousands of spectators that could spread infection.
Mr. President, if I may, let me finish my question, just one more.
Counselor Hart, please.
Thank you, sir. You know, I believe that we should be sending a strong message to our business community and all residents in Indianapolis that we're open for business, and that this is the best place to work and live and play in this country. And I believe that public health order number 12, you know, that only require, that only requires unvaccinated individuals to not have to wear a mask, you know, why not just remove the mask mandate for everyone when it's not possible to enforce who is vaccinated and who's not?
Do you want me to respond to that? So here's the issue. We have a lot of young children here under the age of 12 that they don't have the luxury of being able to vaccinate themselves and be protected. So we have to protect our children, so that's the first order. The second thing is, is that we want to prevent a super spread of infection. I think the earliest, when we're balancing the economy, the fact that we can reach a point and reopen without causing a significant amount of spread, where we may have to regroup and put more restrictions there, we are so close to that point. I think easily, and by that July the Fourth date, that I would like to see us reopen, but I don't have to worry about our cases soaring. We are still seeing people being hospitalized every day in our hospitals, in our critical care units. People have died still as a result of that. So this is still a very deadly, life-threatening infection. And I want to fix this so from an economy standpoint, business will really be booming, and they don't have to worry about having a sick employee that may have to be hospitalized or not be there, and they can stay a robust operations in order to keep this whole community safe. We're a different breed. We have a significant population density, population here. We're unlike any other county in the state of Indiana.
My point being is that you just, we cannot enforce who is vaccinated and who is not vaccinated, so by only allowing people who are vaccinated to drop the mask mandate is not plausible to even enforcement. So what's the point of even keeping a mandate if you can't enforce?
Okay, Counselor Hart.
Can I answer that question? I think that there are...
Dr. Kane, you can answer it, but that was the last comment on this proposal.
Yeah, I think that there are honorable people, honorable people and responsible people, citizens in Indianapolis, who will take, who will take these recommendations very seriously, and it may not be so much concern for themselves, but they're concerned about their loved ones, they're concerned about their colleagues, they may be concerned about seniors in this community that will take this seriously enough to follow those recommendations.
Thank you. Counselor Boots, and then Counselor Maury.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Dr. Kane. I think the Marion County Health Department and the administration is to be commended on guiding us through these turbulent times based on science and medicine and not politics and capitalist markets. So to qualify the math here, we're roughly going, we're roughly defining herd immunity as 80%, as I understand.
That's correct.
And so if we have 36 vaccinated, 30 currently immune by infection...
We're currently at about 66% now.
Correct. So as the number of people, as you mentioned, still dying and getting infected, that 30% number will increase, so should that not decrease our need to hit 50? That maybe if we hit 45 with the current infected immune community, that will reach our 80?
That's a possibility. We will have to relook at our data and what we call our prevalence data at that current time, but we feel that it'll be maintained at least at a 30% level.
Thank you.
Counselor Maury.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Kane, you spoke a lot about the deaths and the hospitalizations with concern to COVID. What is the number one cause of death in Indianapolis currently?
What is the number one cause of death in Indianapolis? Probably heart disease.
Are we putting restrictions on people for heart disease?
No, but heart disease is different. It doesn't transmit other heart disease to other individuals. It won't transmit heart disease to a young child unlike COVID-19.
And then also, I think of places like New York City or Chicago that are fully reopened. They don't have these egregious restrictions. What makes us different from them?
Well, I can't say for New York or Chicago. I can just say for like Washington DC, which I looked at that recent data, they had a positivity rate of 2%, and they were seeing less than 35 cases per day. And they were at 50% vaccination rates or higher in those cities. So their vaccination rates are higher than what we're seeing here in Marion County.
You're using Washington DC solely as that example, correct?
See, I'm sorry?
You're using Washington DC solely.
Washington DC is an example because their vaccination rates are higher, and I just, I recently looked at their data.
So theoretically, nothing...
But I suspect if you look at some of those other, Chicago, for example, if you believe they've reopened completely, I'm not sure that that's the case, but I suspect their vaccination rates are higher, or at least 50% or higher.
Thank you, Counselor Maury. Counselor Mascari.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to call the question.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to call the question. Madam Clerk. Can you open up the board?
Mr. President.
Motion on the floor right now to call the question. That motion carries 19 to 5. All right, then we will be voting on proposal number 195, which ratifies public health orders related to COVID-19. Madam Clerk, could you clear the board? All right, and then put us back on the board. Counselor Nae, you've spoken twice.
I did, Mr. President, but I'd like an opportunity for about 20 or 30 seconds to explain my vote.
When we're done with this, you can explain it. All right. The motion carries 19 to 5. Counselor Nae, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm disappointed I didn't have an opportunity to ask Dr. Kane a couple more questions, as I think this is an extremely important issue in the life of our city and probably one of the most relevant topics. I voted no today because I believe Marion County and Indianapolis should be back at 100% today, and so unless we see something like that, I will be a nay vote. Until then, I'm glad we're moving in somewhat of the right direction, but until we're at 100%, I'll be a nay.
Mr. President.
Yes, Chairman Gray.
Is this the final action that we need to take on this? Once you, once this is passed, then it's official?
It is done.
It don't have to go through the mayor? This is, this makes it official?
That is correct, and so it will be sent to the mayor's office.
It will be?
Yes.
He has to sign it?
Yes.
Okay.
Very good, thank you. Counselor Evans, Jared Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say that I was happy to support tonight's ordinance to end the face mask for those who have been responsible citizens and have gotten vaccinated, but I will say that I have, I carry some of the concerns moving forward as we go into July about continuing the restrictions. I believe the citizens of Indianapolis, many of which have begun to disregard the public health orders, so it puts us in some conflicting ways, so I hope we take that into account as we move forward. I think the citizens are starting to see things as, if you don't go get vaccinated and you have the ability to get vaccinated, it's on you.
Very good. Counselor Bane.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is more of a procedural question, seeing as how this is my first full council meeting here in the chambers. Is it normal, I probably shouldn't use the term "normal," is it appropriate for us to get a proposal three hours ahead of time, not be able to offer amendments to it, and then for debate to be cut off to where we can't even ask questions?
Fortunately, that is the way our municipal code is written, but for a more, I think, thorough explanation, I will ask our council to weigh in. Counselor Kim.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to confirm what President Osley said in answer to your question. Our Muni Code does allow for this procedure to go through as it has.
Would you cite, would you cite the statute, please? Cite the number?
Sure. It's Section 15184 in amendments. Any amendments on the council floor have to be in writing and sent to both the president and the clerk and the general counsel.
Very good, thank you.
Is there anything in the Muni Code that deals with the deadline when a proposal can be submitted and is publicly available?
Counselor Bane, there are rules as to council submission deadlines, but those can be waived at the discretion of the president.
Counselor Maury.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to take a moment here and also, as well as my fellow counselors here, kind of explain my vote, and also kind of piggyback on Counsel... of explain my vote, and also kind of piggyback on Counselor Bain. So are we to understand that we can, we can suspend the rules to allow a proposal to be submitted three hours before it's heard, and then we vote on it with no real discussion, with no amendment possibilities being offered? We can do that, but then when it comes to offering an amendment, we can't suspend the rules for that?
Madam Counsel, would you wait?
Thank you, Mr. President. The time to suspend the rule has passed, so that's not-
If it had not passed, please.
Sure. That's a proper motion to make.
So in this instance, we just chose not to do that for whatever reason, is that correct? And then, I'll chance that here in a minute. You know, one of the things in the amendment that I did want to offer was that we completely lift all mandates, lift all restrictions, let people get back to living their lives. And that was one of the reasons that I voted no on this proposal tonight.
Point of order, Mr. President. You can't talk about amendment now. We, it's-
I appreciate that. Madam Leader, and-
Which was an explanation of my vote, and if I have the floor, if I may.
You may. If you can, if you can be a little brief, we'd appreciate that very much.
Thank you, I have the floor, correct?
You have the floor, and you have a time limit as well.
Okay, that time limit?
It is five minutes.
Five minutes?
Yes.
Thank you, I'll use my five minutes.
Point of order, Mr. President.
You've already been on three. And if we, I don't want to get technical.
Three? Who's counting?
I am.
Where's your timer?
Right here.
Can I see it? I sit right next to it.
You know what, we're not, we're not getting into this.
No, I mean, we're talking about rentals, and now, and now you're going to talk about suspending them and not following them.
Counselor, we're not getting into this.
So you don't want to follow the rules?
Is there any additional comments from counselors? Otherwise, we are going to move on. All right, seeing none. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 146, which is referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 146 authorizes the city of Indianapolis to issue up to $3,670,000 in economic development revenue refunding bonds for Brayburn Village Apartments, and approves and authorizes other actions to provide funds for refunding of previously issued multifamily housing revenue bonds, proceeds of which were used to finance the prior renovation of Braywood Village Apartments located at 8200 East 21st Street and Council District 19. Lori Edwards, Vice President of Acquisition Mechanics Affordable Housing Corporation, gave a PowerPoint presentation. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 90 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, let's proceed to the board. Motion carries 24 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 148, referred to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Chairman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 148 authorizes the Director of Department of Metropolitan Development and the Controller to enter into a payment in lieu of taxes, a pilot agreement with property owners who have received tax exemptions under IC 6-11-10-16. Tom Moore, Assistant Corporation Counsel, Office of Corporation Counsel, stated that prior to 2020, the Indiana Code authorized the city to enter into a pilot agreement with property owners who receive low-income housing exemptions. He added that the amount of payments will be less than what the owner will pay if they are not exempt, and exemptions are granted by the County Property Tax Assessment Board of Appeals, also known as PIABOA. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 10 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, let us go to the board. A motion carries 24 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 149, referred to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 149 amends Chapter 341 of the Code, adding a new Article III regarding waterway activities in and on the downtown canal. Rusty Carr, Deputy Director of the Department of Metropolitan Development, DMD, gave a PowerPoint presentation making the following key points. When the canal was being developed and a company ordinance was not created to regulate the enclosed waterways, potential liability if someone was injured without an ordinance in place does not regulate the sidewalk, it also does not regulate the sidewalks along the canal. Enforcement includes fines starting at $25. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 6 to 4, with counselors Ane, Brown, Jackson, and Robinson casting a negative vote, and Mr. President, I so move.
Mr. President. Mr. President, I have, I was supposed to, I think, comment before I have a motion to move or recommit proposal 149 back to Metropolitan and Development Committee.
All right, very good. All right, very good. Counselor Kim.
Thank you, Mr. President. There is no debate on the merits of the proposal, but there can be debate as to the motion itself.
All right, very good. So it's been properly moved and seconded to send proposal number 149 back to, back to committee. Any comments from counselors? All right, very good. Seeing none. Madam Clerk, can we go to the board? Sorry.
Point of clarification, just so this is a vote to send it back to committee?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, proposal, a motion carries to send proposal 149 back to, back to committee. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 154, referred to Public Works Committee Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I'd like to take proposals number 154 and 155 together.
Consent.
Thank you. Proposal number 154 authorizes intersection controls at 11th Street and Medford and Sharon Avenue in District 11. And proposal number 155 authorizes intersection controls at 54th Street and Kenwood Avenue in Districts 2 and 7. Proposal number 154 was moved by Counselor Carlino and seconded by, oh, wait, moved by Counselor McCormick and seconded by Counselor Carlino, and proposal 155 was moved by Counselor Boots and seconded by Counselor Ane, and the votes, and both of those passed by a vote of 11 to 0, and I so move.
All right, the motion's been properly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Madam Clerk. All right, the motion carries 24 to 0. There's no business under special service district councils, and there's no business under new business. The next item on our agenda is announcements and adjournment. The docketed agenda for this meeting of council, having been completed, the chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
Mr. President.
The chair recognizes Counselor Maury.
Mr. President, I have been, I have been asked to offer the following motion for adjournment by Counselor Osley in memory of Jimmy Lutton, by Counselor Jones in memory of Leon Zercher. Apologize, I was wrong. Mr. President, I would like to move the adjournment of this meeting of the Indianapolis City County Council in recognition of and respect for the life and contributions of those persons I have here specifically named. I respectfully ask the support of fellow counselors. I further request the motion be made part of the permanent records of this body, and the letter bearing the council seal and the signature of the president be sent to each of the, sent to each person advising of this action.
Thank you, Counselor Maury. Hearing no objections, the motion is received, and the requests are so ordered. Hearing no further motions, we adjourn. Thank you, counselors.[1784.63]